Thank you, may be seated. Gentlemen, you have before you the agenda. And do I have any additions, corrections, or changes in the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to put on the agenda to speak just before the public committee.
Before what? I'm sorry.
Put on the agenda to speak for the public comments.
For the public comments, okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Also, item six on the business item.
Yes, sir.
Recommend tabling that item until the presentation. Twenty-eight, may? Awesome.
Okay, there's some time constraints. I know that that item is mandatory. Is that something things for?
No, it is not. I mean, we can have a session tonight, or maybe tomorrow or day, but there is no way possible that we cannot take action on that. Twenty-eight, we need insurance in place with us, you know, bid and so on. It is impossible. Bush has to make that happen.
Is there more information you need, Mr. Williams, or?
Yes, I was in the process of reviewing checking references as well with that process. But I could be complete hopefully by the end of this week.
Well, I would say I have something to do with that. I don't think we have time. We can talk about tonight, we can do a closed session. We need to take action if we need. I mean, this has been out there for a while. I know the PAC has been out there for at least ten days. The council will review. I understand. But we have spent an enormous amount of time going through this. And our back term is a wall of this. We're talking a substantial amount of money that the broker has got to go out on the area of our health insurance. It's going to be probably a million dollar premium, give or take. We just can't do that in fifteen days, or ten days, or whatever. We can have our enrollment, our approval. The staff has checked the references. We've got a report on that, and we hear in detail. Council, someone do that, that's fine. No problem with that at all. But we cannot delay this.
Well, we just need it on the agenda to address it.
That's our decision. So stay on the agenda as calendar, let's get to it. Any other changes or additions? There was an item that was requested for an addition before you, or addition to the agenda. The business title number seven, which we had asked the manager to do for us. I think at this time, this is for the request for approval letters to be sent to our local delegation concerning occupancy in PACs and over the PACs district. My recommendation to the board will be not to put this on the agenda, but continue to research on it, as we talked about in the pledge session. And so for that reason, I'm asking in all places on the agenda this time. Anybody have any problem with that?
No.
I think it was Councilman Harris made some discussions about it, and had recommended drafting a letter. So I think it's only appropriate that he has the time to actually look at it and give proper information on it.
Again, the manager did follow our instructions, and I do think something like this needs to have some public discussion, especially if it is involved. So I would ask that we take that. I'll put it on the agenda. We have a motion that we approve the agenda with those changes.
Second.
Oh, second. Those are right.
Aye.
Close. Okay, this agenda has been set. Our first item for presentations, which we don't have any, but we're going to public hearings for RZ thirteen dash oh one, Pinko Land Company LLC. The applicant is seeking to rezone approximately ten acres of land from R twenty-eight, which is residential agricultural, zoning district of the B three zoning district. Property considered for rezoning is located at the south side of North Carolina Highway two-ten, approximately four hundred and seventy feet west of this intersection with Island Drive. And further identified as Johnston County Tax ID number one five zero seven six zero one two B. We have a motion. We go into a public hearing.
Second.
Second. Those are right.
Aye.
Close. Public hearing is open. Regent, I understand.
Mr. Mayor, I think we will have some testimony provided tonight, and maybe we want to go ahead and swear the witnesses.
Anybody who wishing to speak in this public hearing or against the Pinko Land Company, please stand with his eye and face the clerk. Mr. Director?
Too much writing, please. To solve my firm, to tell the truth, my own truth, and that's about the true self of you.
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Mr. General.
First off, I'd like to mention that the property owner, as well as representative of Pinko Land Company are in the rear of the room. Let me reference you to where we are in this project. This is US seven, the west. This is the town cemetery. This is NC two-ten. This is Johnson Tire right here. And the site is just beyond that. It's about a ten acre track and that big farm field that PACs up to the south side of NC two-ten. In your packet, you will find that there's their rezoning application that's in there. It has the basic information of it. There's a statement of justification that was prepared by the applicant, as well as the required finding of fact. All the finding of fact you need to take into consideration in your deliberation a little bit later on. The owner's consent form, Mr. Dinning signature there for allowing for the application. We'll go to page eight is the staff report. The application is for rezoning the property from residential agricultural to E three's business zoning. The acreage is ten acres, currently as I said, R twenty-eight. The environmental proposed rezoning may be located near or environmentally sensitive areas to include designated wetlands and the hundred year flood plain. The site will be subject to the Town of Smithfield Order Management Regulations also. If you, basically on your map where the tree line is for just general reference, we have the hundred year flood event. So the actual open field where most of the construction will see, which is up here, is located above the hundred year flood line. And this is the back old headwaters of the ponds down there, and this is the new stormwater pond that's proposed. I will let the applicant learn more detail about that. The property considered for re, excuse me, the zoning to the north is R twenty-eight and R eight. To the south, it's R twenty-eight. To the east is R twenty-eight and B three. And to the west is R twenty-eight. The property considered for rezoning that's currently being used for agricultural endeavors, rezoning the property to B three would allow all permitted uses within the B three zoning district would be considered as future approval, including retail strip centers, as well as multifamily housing complexes. Consistency with the strategic growth plan, the proposed B three business zoning and uses permitted in that district can be considered consistent with the strategic growth plan, which recommends the area to be considered for office and institutional high density residential developments. Consistency with unified development code. Any approved development at this location must be in compliance with the UDO. And the compatibility with the surrounding land uses, property is rezoning would be consistent with the current zoning in that area. Fire protection will be by the Town of Smithfield. It will be limited impacts as far as the school, but the school system has that capacity for any development that would occur on that property. Parks and recreation, if the property is developed, will require recreational fees. Assessments for streets, access to the streets will be on NC two-ten highway, which is a NC DOT roadway. Water and sewer will be provided by the Town of Smithfield. Electrical provider is Progress Energy. What the council was asked to do tonight is to go through the findings that are provided by the applicant in his application. And on the planning board, April fourth meeting, two thousand and thirteen, they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the request to rezon the property from R twenty-eight residential zoning district to B three. Couple of other things to take into consideration, you will remember a couple of months ago, there was another project that was needed. A conditional use permit was given for this tract of land right here. That was also for tax credit housing, that same program is the tax credit housing. It's a competitive program that's through the state of North Carolina. I'll let them explain it as far as how the funding is, but it's basically two projects considered underfunding. I think there were total of four approved in the preliminary applications for all Johnston County. There's one in Clayton, two in Smithfield, and one in Princeton. How many of those will actually be funded is determined by the North Carolina Housing Finance Service. That's still to be determined. Will not be determined until sometime after the end of this. So with that being said, you go through there. There's a survey showing the actual plot of land with the ten acres on it. It also shows the wetlands and the tree lines. You also have on page thirteen, the adjacent property notification. And so with that, I stand open for any questions.
Any questions, Mr. General?
Any other type of question, or is the gentleman PAC who stood up to see the agenda?
He is from Pinko Land Company. The gentleman next to him in green shirt is Mr. Dinning. He is the property owner.
Could I just ask Mr. Dinning and the other applicant if they'll review the materials in the file on pages two through fourteen, the agenda? It's just a stack of facts that we're reviewing by the planning board. Also, the required scheduling for the rezoning. And ask if you agree with the statements in that in this series.
I've not seen the agenda tonight, I'm sorry, so I've not had a chance to read that.
But you're going to need to review it if you're going to make a presentation of what you're asking for.
I really don't plan to make a presentation. I'm just basically here to answer questions if you have questions. I think Paul has done a great job presenting our desire.
Okay, but the problem is, the applicant needs to show those facts, and I'm trying to give you a very easy way to do that.
Okay.
Do you agree with the materials in each?
I'll take a look at it real quick.
Please do so.
Where can I get a copy?
Just so I'm clear, the only thing we're addressing right now is the rezoning petition.
That's right.
We'll get to part two.
And he's gone through the same thing, part two also?
Right, but the rezoning stands on its own and has nothing to do with the project that he's built.
So it's got to be behind your backs for rezoning.
That is correct, but the rezoning request has nothing to do with what he plans.
We're in agreement with what we presented before. Just make a statement. I'm in agreement with what we presented, yes, and the agenda for tonight.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Question I have, and just to make sure, Mr. Imbler. The permitted request is a permitted request within the requested zoning, is that correct?
You're only considering the rezoning. It must stand on its own merits in this process.
Exactly. So my question is, is that the rezoning request, the request that is being made, okay? This will be a permitted use, right?
Would you say permitted use?
If this property were to be rezoned.
We're only talking about the actual zoning, not the potential within the UDO. It does have rezoning for the agricultural to the B three. Without the larger incentive of what the use of B three is in B three.
Any use in our chart of uses is allowed in a B three. If it is rezoned, a B three will be allowed by right of use, or as a conditional use.
Right. So my whole point is, as you started going into the presentation about yourself, about what was going on in the project and type of funding and so forth.
I was in ear on that. I should not have done that. I'm sorry.
Any other questions, Mr. Dinning?
I know the notice was sent to the adjoining properties. Did y'all hear from any adjoining property items?
Not from all of us.
You've seen the findings of fact that were presented to you. Oh, yeah, the public here, sorry. Anyone else that wishes to be heard, public here. I'll make a motion to close.
I'll make a motion to close, public here.
Second.
Oh, then a second. Those are right.
Aye.
Here, you can close. Now, you see the required findings of fact before you. Is there any one particular that you agree with or would ask question for what you have a motion? Or findings of fact that you agree with?
Mayor, I would make a motion that we adopt findings of fact one through eight as written in the agenda packet, pages four and five.
I'll second the motion.
Second. I would say right.
Aye.
We can vote for approval or not. Do we have to do that motion as well, so the votes be planned? A lot of motion to approve the zoning against the question.
So.
Second. Motion is second. Those are right.
Aye.
Close. All right, we'll start then with the second public hearing. With Pinko Land Company LLC, the applicant is seeking conditional use permit to construct seventy-two unit family, multifamily housing complex. On the ten acres land located within the B three business zoning district. The property considered for approval is located on the south side of NC two-ten, approximately four hundred and seventy feet west of this intersection with Island Drive, further identified as Johnston County ID back number one five zero seven six zero one two B. Motion, we open this public hearing.
Second.
Motion has second. I would say right.
Aye.
Close. Public hearing now open.
Once again, I would, testimony may be provided, and I would suggest that anyone who presents testimony will be sworn in.
Okay. If there's anyone wishing to be heard of this public hearing, please stand before the clerk with your right hand for affirmation or...
Do you have time to tell your proposal, or is it about the truth of you?
I do, dear.
Now that I've got horse before the, I'll call up to the clerk now. Proceed with conditional use permit. The conditional use permit application is shown on page fifteen through nineteen. Page nineteen is the owner's consent form. And on page twenty-one is the staff report. The project is located on the south side of NC two-ten, approximately four hundred and seventy feet in the intersection with Island Drive. The request for conditional use permit to construct seventy-two unit multifamily apartment complex is his tax credit housing. The acreage of the tract is ten acres, the present zoning. Now that you have rezoned it as B three, the existing uses vacant at the present time. The proposed use will be a seventy-two unit multifamily housing, Wellington apartment complex with a attached office. There are three housing units proposed that will have various configurations of apartments with one community slash office building in there. There are also a rental system and some recreational facilities associated with it. The applicant has provided a detailed sketch plan that shows a seventy-two unit apartment complex located on the south side of NC two-ten. Plan shows the location of three two-story apartment buildings, each containing twenty-four apartments. Internal circulation is provided by a two-way drive aisle with a hundred and sixty-five landscape parking spaces. Ingress and ingress will be provided by the proposed access point on NC two-ten, which must be permitted by NC DOT. The plan indicates a plant buffer along the east and west property lines. That buffer will also have to be provided along the southern property line in the form of existing vegetation. It's stormwater detention pond is shown lakehead on the south side of the project. Entities are shown on the plan and include playground seating areas that cover picnic area that is part of the sidewalk network. It is consistent with the future land use plan. Has been identified this property as being suitable for high density residential development. Consistency with the UDO, if the development complex is permitted within B three, all out of all conditions that we have to do that. The proposed multifamily apartment complex is adjacent to similar multifamily housing developments and conveniently located near shopping and other entities. It is unlikely that negative impacts are existing in future surrounding uses would occur provided that actual UDOs installed in accordance with UDO, that is how we develop it. The goodly portion of Skyland Drive development is some form of multifamily housing or senior care housing. It's some form of multifamily up there. Landscape and buffering, the landscape buffers, parking lot landscaping, building foundation, and then all will be required by the UDO. Signs, the development identification signs will have in here. Here in the Town of Smithfield will provide fire protection. Recreational fees will be assessed for this project, which based on the previous projects that council has looked at multifamily, is seven hundred dollars per unit. Access will to the project will be from NC two-ten. Water and sewer provided by the Town of Smithfield and Progress Energy will provide them. When considering the conditional use permit, the planning board and the town council submitted the finding of facts, the conditional use permit fails to meet any of these findings, shall be deemed adverse to the public interest and should not be approved. The applicant has addressed the findings expressly established in Article thirteen, section thirteen through seventeen of the Smithfield UDO and has attached as part of the exhibit application that they have submitted. Staff has made one recommendation on approval that the applicant provide a detailed site plan that meets the emergency development standards from the UDO. Planning board's recommendation in Article forty was to be announced and recommend approval of the conditional use permit, construction of the seventy-two unit multifamily apartment complex and property located within the B three seven district. So with your approval, this conditional use permit, the applicant upon receiving the funds to construct the project will go through the UDO development process, which is the engineering plans, architectural plans. It will be reviewed by staff, other works, public utilities, as well as the county building.
And so you're asking to take consideration of that and stand open for questions. Any questions, Mr. General?
This may be redundant, but the drawing in our agenda and the drawings you have up there, are they in compliance with our UDO?
In general, compliance, we get into the detailed compliance of the UDO as we get into specifics. At this level of time, based on the client not having all the engineering data necessarily for the development of the plant, and it would be kind of foolhardy to spend the money to do that until he knows he's received funding. So what we've asked him to do is provide an accurate survey, which is in the packet. There's the survey of the property, as well as based on that survey to establish the horizontal geometry of the project as best, if it be done with the information he has at this point. As he gets more detailed information, we will refine that particularly associated with utility and water and sewer.
Any other questions, Mr. General?
At what point will the recreation fees be paid to your town?
Private issuance of a stipend.
As far as traffic in and out of the subdivision itself, is this DOT issue? As far as turn lane?
I can only tell you what DOT has expressed in the past. Is a center turn lane for left turn movements and a D cell lane for right turn movements. So coming from the west, from the creek toward the property, it would be a D cell lane on the shoulder of the road. And then coming from the east, coming from town to it, they require middle turn lane. Now, the geometry of that will be determined by DOT. And that's based on the number of generations that are expected coming in and out of the apartment complex. So how big that will be, I can't answer that question right now.
Yes.
Do you foresee that there will be a turn lane or some sort of putting in that? Because I know that's a pretty, can be a pretty congested area, traffic coming in and out of town, especially in the afternoons.
I would perceive it, and based on DOT's past requirements, it will be required.
I would certainly hope that, yes. Really have no control over it, but best to make sure that there is a turn lane.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, Mr. General? Doc, draft it is what you've seen in this document present your request as to what's just been presented by the gentleman.
Yes, it does.
You have a question, figure that out, Colonel.
Well, I do, just for clarity's sake, I think I know the answer, but I want to get it on the record. Whatever DOT requires out there, I don't want it to be Smithfield's responsibility, like it's economy at Smithfield Crossing. So if they require a turn lane, I don't want to prove something to where we've got to do a bunch of work and spend a bunch of money. And so can you tell me if DOT requires a turn lane or widening the road, that'll be to state expense?
That would be a developer having to prove that it would be, that they will actually require the developer to place a bond in the amount of the construction. Basically, I think it's a hundred and fifty-five percent of the construction value of the lane. They would have to require a bond to be there. So if for whatever reason the developer would default in constructing the turn lane, DOT will call the bond and see.
I would like to make that part of the condition here.
Just when the council makes a motion to do that, then I'll suggest you do that.
Yes, question, question.
We'll do that just if DOT requires it. I have a substantial chance. The problem is, it's kind of tricky, at least they want to do it in this tract. And the bond was, you know, so it's just if DOT requires this, it's not a tract. It's surprising the way the deal rates are at. I want to list the rights of the grant.
Oh, I hear you.
But they don't require it. It's a new requirement. Well, Mr. General, let me ask you this. This is just conditional use. Is the site plan that you consider and approve separately, or is there not?
The stop plan would be separately approved from this, but the council at its discretion could make it a condition of their approval to have a turn lane.
I mean, they could have more data in the site plan approval, that would come back to council and landlord or not?
No, sir. The stop plan, after the council issues the conditional approval, this is not a conditional use district. This is a conditional use permit. Here again, as part of that condition, you could request the stop plan after staff finishes its review to come back and you can say amen to it.
You said you could require a turn lane now. And I was suggesting not require that, but DOT requires, but they've got them in there.
Well, as we continue to develop that area commercially, it may not cause by this specific, specific, but what is the likelihood that DOT can say, "Smithfield, you allow us to develop, you double the size of two-ten for the first mile"? and say, "Smithfield, you allowed us to develop, you doubled the size of 210 for the first mile."
That had that conversation, two things, I agree 100% is a concern, no question. I don't believe they would say that, I think they would say, "We had our chance, we didn't require it, I don't know what there is." I have a hard time believing that a development this size doesn't require traffic, so I don't know what the county is, but with the traffic based generation, there'll be at least some measurable study done. And if there's that much concern, you might just want to have and bring back the site plan board's approval. And also if you make your condition, basically if DOT requires a turn lane or some sort of D cell, XL lane, you don't have to bring that back, they don't require anything, you can do it for your own determination. I will say, at least now, I'm going to change that to the general assembly, but right now, the town can require turn lanes on property in the subdivision. Typically, it's on the same, it's in the same, that's the same standards that DOT would have typically, but there's a wide range out there that can be done. We're honored to be in our analysis on that and make an honest decision on it. But it's a concern, it's unknown, I think it can be avoided by a site plan law that, and I'm a little surprised that it doesn't come back automatically. Once you make a conceptual approval for the conditional use, you know for a more detailed plan.
Well, can we hear from the applicant on this, because when we were talking about this, I saw him in the back room shaking his head, so can we, he may be able to.
Let me just make one more statement of clarification, what DOT is expressing to us. They don't so much look as what the project itself is going to generate, unless it's a big trip generator. They look at the traffic count on NC 210. What happens is DOT's guideline, policy, I'm not sure, or rule, I'm not sure which one it is, is that what's the count? It's around 9,000 cars, nine to 10,000 cars a day, they require a center turn lane. It drives, right now, the last traffic count I saw in NC 210 was 11,000 per day. It varies from year to year. If you went out there and counted it, two months ago when the bridge closed, it's probably down to 5,000. Because nobody was coming that way because they couldn't get the count. But I suspect you won't see it mushrooming right back up. When I've gone online and checked it, and I pulled it from Mr. Denny several months back, and the traffic count's been running nine, 10, 11,000 over the last five or six times they've counted it. They counted it about once every two years.
Captain, has any questions for you, Mr. Oliver?
Good evening, I'm Mike Weaver, I'm with the Penner Grab Company of Raleigh. I actually did bring some other stuff, if anybody would like to see some of our other work that we've done around the state, I'll pass this around to you. First page is just a quick rendering of what we're proposing. Regarding this issue with DOT and the turn lane, I would like to defer to your attorney, Mr. Spence. I agree with him in that we're going to comply with whatever DOT asks us to do. And I believe the car count that Mr. Emmerler discussed is 9,000 on 210. And if it ends up to 11,000, and through our approval process with DOT, if they ask us to put in the turn lane, we're going to put in the turn lane. We do that frequently, so we're not opposed to it, we're not afraid of it, we know that that can be something that's large. And we do know that the traffic count has jumped back up since the bridge has opened back up. Matter of fact, I was over at the site this afternoon, and pretty heavily been traveling through that area. So discussion brought on point, and we understand that DOT would probably ask us to put a turn lane.
And there was some mention, I guess, about posting a bond, is that?
That's a requirement.
That will happen.
Yes.
Okay, my next question is, and my concern is, is there, there is talk in the legislature now about turning over roads to the cities. So if that were to happen, say within the next 90 days, which I certainly don't foresee it happening, but it is a possibility, I guess, then it really wouldn't matter what DOT said, and it would be on the town. And we do have this legislation that is looming out there. So back to my original question, I mean, I think maybe Paul's recommendation of bringing the site plan back before us is not a bad idea. At which time, maybe we'll have some, possibly some more information from DOT.
There will be several additional meetings to come after the conditional use is permitted. Obviously, your architectural view process, we've got to follow that, we've got to comply with the UDO plan. And so we're not, we're fully expecting either the state or the city or the county is going to address this issue with the road. So we're not going to be surprised by that.
All right, so Paul, this is another question back to you. At, when the site plan is submitted, you can come back for the council, and then at that time, we can have an opportunity to look at it. Hopefully have some additional information from DOT, at which time we can make a final decision on the turn lane, is that correct?
I would make that a condition in my motion.
Okay, and from what I just understood, that's not going to delay your project, Denny?
No.
Shouldn't delay anything, have to come back before this is worked. Fair enough.
In terms of the type of project, I understand from materials that this is a tax credit project.
Yes, sir.
Means you get tax credits for the development of the building, but it is not a grant subsidy.
No, these apartments are income capped, meaning that the people that live in these apartments will be restricted in terms of how much money they can make. And typically, that's at 60% of the median income for the city of Smithfield for the house account. But no, it's not Section 8 or anything like that.
It subsidizes the average level of Section 8 and probably appropriate.
That is correct.
It is paid, it's a different program, it's your distributed subsidized housing, as Mr. Emmerler asked me, and subsidized housing based on tax free loan.
We receive tax credits as a part of the process to be able to buy the interest rates down on the loans that we secure to build property with. And that allows us to provide a little bit lower rent than what we find in a typical market rent apartment community. For example, there are 72 units in this particular project, 32 of them are two-bedroom, 32 of them, 34 of them are three-bedroom, I believe. And the rents are going to run from around $400 a month to approximately $600 a month. That's actually pretty much in keeping with the market rents in this area from what we've been able to find from our market study. But unlike a traditional Section 8 property, which is focused on just that type of tenant, we will be going through a process of looking at their overall income level. And again, as I said, it will be focused on 60% as the median income for this area. You're looking at typical tenants being teachers, police officers, fire department workers, city workers. It ranges across the board, but it is not our intent for this to be a Section 8 property. Not the amount of money we're getting ready to spend on it. Total project cost is well over $9 million. At the planning stage, it'll probably be more than that before approval. And as you can see from the photographs, the properties that we build are very, very nice. Many of them have swimming pools, garages, they all pretty much have community centers with athletic facilities inside of them. Community rooms for the tenants to meet, oftentimes they have small libraries in the community rooms. So these are well-appointed, lots of amenities, and well-constructed. And not only do we have to follow your requirements for construction, but we also have to follow the state's requirements for construction. So the North County Housing Finance Agency will thoroughly inspect the construction from day one, as well as your building inspectors here will do the same. We also plan to have a site manager on-site, that's the reason why we're building this office in the middle. And there will also be maintenance staff on-site that will maintain the apartments, maintain the grounds, and make sure that they are always looking nice and new.
As far as the management of it, and the screening process for applicants, can you maybe touch on that a little bit?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, we're a very interesting company. Many developers will come into a town like Smithfield and build a community. And then they wind up handing that off to another company to manage their asset. We don't do that. We basically take the property from cradle to grave, meaning that our company, we find the sites, we develop the property, and we manage the property ourselves. We own the property, we manage it ourselves. We have about 156 people in our management division of our company, so it's actually our employee on-site, not a second party or third party that's managing for us. So the owner of the property has direct personal contact with the property. And that's what makes us much different than most other companies that do this. Most of them are developers, and most of them are property managers. We are actually all three, we're the construction company, we're also the developing company, and we're also managing.
Do you do criminal background checks?
Thorough, thorough criminal background check. Most apartment communities that you walk up to today, especially conventional properties, you can pretty much get approval to move into that apartment the same day. Typically, it takes us about two weeks to get you approved, because not only do we do a thorough national criminal background check, we also do a landlord background check, we also do an employment background check, and we also ask for references. And we also look at your bank account, we're going to look at you, we're going to run a credit report on you. So we look at you every way we can to ensure that we're not placing someone in that apartment community that's going to be a problem for us or for the city. And luckily, we don't have problems.
Y'all don't get any tax credit on local property tax, do you?
Pardon me?
Y'all don't get any tax credits for local property tax purposes, do you?
We will work with you though on historic tax credits. If you've got some you want to award, and let us take some of your old buildings and turn that into housing, right right behind here.
I was getting ready to say.
We've looked at that building, we've run it by a couple times, and we find it to be very interesting, we think it'd look a fantastic senior property. It probably would not work for the North County Housing Finance Agency tax credits, but historic tax credits, they're often issued by local municipalities. We do those, and that would be a fantastic location, love to talk to you about that outside of this issue. One thing about our property, one thing about our company, if you're a tenant in one of our properties, your rent is due on the first of the month. Your passing in on the fifth of the month, if you've not paid your rent by the 15th of the month, I'm taking it in court. And by the 30th of the month, I'm trying to get you out. So I'm not going to play with you. If you have a drug problem, if you have a crime issue, if you're not paying your rent, if you're destroying the property, if you're causing me or you many problems, we're going to be talking to your magistrate on a regular basis, hopefully I don't have to talk to him at all. But it's a very methodical process, and it is a process for us, it's not personal, it's business. And our approach to it is a very business-like approach. And it works well.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got a question?
Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to contribute on this matter?
Just something to kind of amplify what Mr. Moore was saying. And there may be more documentation out on it, because I spent a week since I read it. But DOT's giving back on roadways, we're basically talking about state route roads like Buffalo Road and Booker Dairy Road, and not NC numbered highways and not US numbered highways. Now, there will be some exceptions to that, but they're talking about state routes, the SR numbered ways.
Anyone else want to contribute? Not while the meeting is closed over here. Second, go to the right. Up here, it's closed, we see the findings of facts.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the findings of fact numbered one through four as set forth on page 17 of the vision.
We have a motion on the floor that we approve. The findings of fact, and we have a second.
Thank you.
Second, all those played right?
Aye.
All right, we need to approve the, I believe we approve the additional use permit under the additions we need to set forth. Site plan comes back to us number one.
Is that what we're going to make a decision on? Is that all the way?
Yes, sir, we approve the conditional use permit with the condition that the site plan comes back to us for approval. And also adopt with the condition set forth by the planning staff.
Well, basically.
I did away with that one.
You hear the motion, so I'll second.
I'll second the motion.
All right, second and everybody say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to you being on the stage.
I hope we get the award, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Williams, I'll identify you before the public comment.
Mr. Mayor, sometime in February, I think February meeting, Mr. Skip Green came. Was asking for a $75,000, offer $75,000. Well, since that time, Mr. Paul, you don't have that. Mr. Chris Johnson has called meetings in my community. I didn't receive an invitation when I found out I was having, and I tried to find out what it was all about. They seem to give my citizens, they apply for some type of grant to help build, we call it homes. But if you notice that children package, and they gave to us, everything that they asked for was for the downtown development. And it was something like they were setting up a home so that they could loan to people in the central industry of town, not nowhere else. And they had one, approximately four or five meetings. One was at St. Peter's Church over in Hillmouth, and about three or four, at that time, council room. Basically, every time they have those, all the peoples are beautiful, people that eat Smithfield. But this package and agenda clearly states that it was for downtown development and downtown business district. This addition to the agenda was handed to us on, on Business 98, February, February agenda. Searching, oh, got one. But basically, this agenda was so large that, you know, and Mr. Green was here. And I don't have a problem with it. People say, "You have to leave it here, or you're missing from the citizens, they can thank you here and stuff." No, then I've got a problem. And I've really got a problem with Mr. Paul Emmerlin and Mr. Chris Johnson, because I feel like they are leading the peoples to a wrong conclusion. And if you were looking at additional agenda, it would lead to downtown central district. And on that, they've seemed to set a loan institute, and it's the town that's all of this. And if it is, then that puts the town in, in the role of responsibilities to whatever the downtown development people are doing. And this is about this issue. And the reason to bring it to you, the reason why I had to discuss it like this, when I found out that one of the citizens wrote it to me to tell me that this was what was going, asked me what was going on in the building. He gave to Mr. Paul, the city manager, and he told me, he said, "I don't want to, I don't want to trade you." I said, "I don't want to do it either." So it can hurt that I had to leave his office, because I had to call yet another council, come to a meeting, find out what was going on. And every time we've had this, they've never discussed, this is for downtown central district. Now, if you were to look at what has happened over the years, the town has given downtown money. They've got grants, they've got everything, and they've continued to, yeah, and greed. So I don't have a problem with the downtown development, whatever they do, that's their business. But whenever it comes to the town and the town being poor, this is wrong. And I ask that the night that Mr. Chris Johnson, we eliminated from any business of the town of Smithfield, you know, boys, kids, downtown development, I have nothing to do. of Smithfield, you know, boys, kids, downtown development, I have nothing to do with that. But the downtown, whenever he can come and make citizens think that they are seeing as something they're not, and it's not just one meeting or, you got men coming out of town, out of somewhere else. Last week, we had, we want to change from CBD rather to something else. Said, this is what, we just about got there. We had the people struggling, getting money, but you had to change the name. And this is a kind of for the council. I don't think the council knew what was going on. But addition to the two, it was a paperwork, you need to read, you need to want to read. This is what you did was what was going on. And I hope that all of you, I think you were getting one, reading, and I had one. And what I know, the night, the town to do aid. I want the town to do aid, receive a audit from the downtown development for the last five years. We have been, we have been told, we have, we have been, uh, made the responsibility to the downtown development is to give us aid, aid, annual court. The annual court, well, we're not, financial court, annual financial court. And we are not getting that. Not only that we are not getting that, if you read this, this, uh, expert, the addition to the agenda, you'll find out, they'll, not only that, they'll establish aid in this loan, which, well, they ain't getting money as long as the business is in hand. But the town is incorporated in this. I don't think the town can do that. And then next, the next month, June, I'll be able to make a recommendation. I want one of them called, I want third of this case, or business day of the year. I don't think this should be the leaders without the caps on, getting a little way up. I don't need to put a way up, I don't really want to go down there.
All right, Mr. Paul, Mr. Williams, the conversation, exactly which one, what you wanted?
I just have a question. Mr. Williams, you mentioned you wanted an order from, I think that's what you said, from downtown development. Did you mean like financial statement? Is that, so we're clear?
They, they have bound up the student year, that they give us a financial statement at the end of the year, you know, for the seven to nine days after, you know, you know, they would have given, you would have given annual reports, annual financial report.
So you requesting that for what, the last five years?
Five, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, also, I'd like for Mr. Green to come back and counsel sort of explain what his agenda was on these meetings, if he could please. I guess Mr. Johnson could do that. He's partnered with him.
For Mr. Johnson does, just want to clarify, I reckon, a few things. One, it was a February meeting, there were two different applications and grants that were applied for. One was a downtown loan, uh, application for revolving loan, whereas you can use for downtown businesses. That one was actually, we got a letter recently, that one was denied actually. That was a completely different loan program than the other meeting, which I believe Mr. Williams attended, which was basically for the community planning grant out in the area away from downtown. And that one, again, we just got a letter on that one too, that one actually was awarded. That program is a CDPG, it's called the Town Enhancement Capacity Building Funds. And that's what Mr. Green, not Skip Green, but the other, Mr. Green, applied for, and they did just recently, you see that grant. The other grant in the downtown area was a revolving loan program, again, from USDA. If you remember that one, that was explained at that time. The entity through the town receives funds, they loan it under certain conditions to businesses developing, and if those businesses pay that, the town basically keeps those money, they can send it out to another group for the same, for the same business. Did not, were not awarded that grant. Those are two different grant applications, just to clarify. I think the meeting that I mentioned, if I'm not mistaken, I think, and again, that's back to the plan grant, which was actually awarded through that Town Enhancement Capacity Building Funds Grant, again, through the Department of Community Assistance. That one, if I remember correctly, there might have been a defect on the original ad and it also extended the application date on that program. So I think the Department of Community Development, or Community Assistance, they requested the entity to, to just conduct a hearing again. That's why you may not have seen it, but the council did authorize the application and the, and the hearing to be taken place and take that public input. Remember, probably there was one, and they had to redo it basically to just meet their requirements. I think the language had, had to be addressed a little bit. But that was the reason for the second, the second meeting. But there were two different underlay programs.
Yeah, but he is, the only one that we have is one about the downtown. He did say, I know, right, he, he, or something else, but who knows what it is? I mean, if he took time to come and explain it to the county, and then he covered people's name, was telling the citizens, they had to tell them, they didn't do it, something, but he didn't tell what, I mean, you know, no more to do.
Didn't make any difference about that, about that obligation.
Well, first of all, the revolving loan grant I didn't apply for, small business revolving loan grant, the first time I heard about it was sitting in here at a town council meeting. My organization was nowhere, I was completely unaware that the town of Smithfield was applying for that. Appreciate giving the honor and the credit for doing stuff like that, but I can't take credit for something I didn't do. I did get a call from Garland Burnett a couple of weeks back, after the grant had been applied for, asking what it was about. And he told me at that time that it would be denied because we did not have an active project. So he assumed, just like a lot of people assume, that my organization is involved in it because it's saying down, because it's saying small business. But my organization didn't apply for the grant. Regarding the grant that we just won, Mr. Green, Wallace Green, because of his relationship with Commerce, received a phone call saying that the ad that we initially ran, we, town of Smithfield, me as a citizen of Smithfield just being concerned about that area, wanting to be involved in seeing that community better itself, that's the only reason why I participated in. I have no financial gain, my organization has no financial gain in it other than it's been identified at the corridor of trying to improve the visual looks of it. So I spent my personal time trying to assist a community to do something and, but the ad, the only thing was wrong was the ad that ran in the paper had incorrect terminology in it. And that Commerce called up Mr. Green saying, "Mr. Green, if you have enough time to rerun the ad and have another public hearing for the same thing, just nothing's changing, just basically for formality, that we haven't, we've been able to extend the deadline of the grant for the $50,000, for the planning that we've, that we've been discussing." That was all that was is, is nothing was different, nothing changed, nothing, it was just basically a formality that we had to run the ad and that we had to meet so that we could be, so that we could potentially stay in the running to win this grant, and I'm glad to hear that we're successful. From that, my organization has nothing to do with it other than trying to be an advocate for the town of Smithfield, if and for organizations such as Mr. Green's. To then now that we've got the planning grant, to then be able to apply for more grants, whatever they may be, whether it's parks and recreation grants, or public housing grants, or removing blight, you name it. I don't know, I don't have a magic ball, I don't have a crystal ball to know what type of grants that we, collectively, we, the town of Smithfield, will be applying for, but I'm glad that we've won it. But I'll be more than happy, Mr. Sadson emailed me last week regarding the, our budget. Listen, I know where every dime's spent, and I'll have that to you by the end of the week. I've unfortunately been busy with the festival this past week, I'd have it to you tonight. But I'll be more than happy, I've got, I can, I can have any, any financial information. I know where every dollar's spent, and I spend it wisely because I own three pieces of property myself downtown, so I look at it as if it's my own. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions. I feel like we're probably the most open organization there is in the town of Smithfield. I'll stand behind that.
Chris, what about these meetings? You're part of these meetings that Mr. Williams mentioned?
Yeah, see, I was a part of them because I was called saying that we've got to have these, just kind of being included in the loop. Again, we had a series of meetings. We had a meeting at a church, we had a meeting here at the town hall. And then after the application went in, Commerce reviewed all of the applications that Mr. Green had to apply for, and realized that the ad that ran did not state something exactly how they wanted it phrased in that ad. And they called Mr. Green and they said, "We've been able to extend the deadline for the application. If you can run another ad, and if you can have another public hearing, we'll make sure that you stay into the running." Well, fortunately, we were able to do that. We were able to get an ad in, we met here again several weeks ago, and when it sounds up, we've won because we were able to do that. And we didn't reapply anything, we haven't changed anything in the grant application. It's exactly what we've talked about since January, February, when we first talked, talked about it.
Is public hearing, citizens encouraged by what you were doing? Did they want you to do what you were doing, or did they?
Well, we told them exactly what, nothing was changing in that all the things that they've talked about, whether it's blighted, you know, blighted homes, you know, the egress, regress that we've talked about, the transportation area, and how unsafe it is, all those things. We've talked about water sewer over in that area, we've talked about drainage. Everything that the community has talked about is still in that, you know, in those talking points. And all it is, is the grant is now afford that organization to be able to hire somebody to write grants based on what the citizens want in that community.
Look, Chris, it's my understanding that he was, Mr. Wallace Green was going through this process to try to push through his time constraint on this.
There was, there was a time constraint in the sense that he received a call from Commerce saying that the deadline for the grant application had been extended another, and I'm paraphrasing, another month. And if you can get in the applicant, the, you can have, because of technical reasons, run another ad in the newspaper and have another public hearing to talk about the very same thing that you just talked about two months ago, that you can still be in the running. And that's what, that's what, exactly what we did.
And there was no review?
No, just things for the community?
No, once they, once they came here that night, they realized what it was, because I spoke to several of the ministers that came here and I said, because actually, when a couple of the people that showed up, Ms. Wazette, you know, I was kind of shocked that there was somebody that, I said, you know, it's kind of odd that you're here, and she's become concerned. I said, well, all this is, is a formality. I really wasn't expecting anybody to come because nothing was changing. It was just, like I said, a formality state which required us to do, just basically come together and have cookies and a drink and say, "This is what we're doing, we're still in the running, we just have to meet for formality purposes and go on." But for some reason, it's got off track that there's been another grant applied for and that something else has been, you know, that the rules have changed, when nothing's changed.
So for the record, the grant, all that you just referred to that we won, what is that grant for?
That's, that's a planning grant to plan for infrastructure, bringing the plan to see what's needed in that designated area. Which would be that whole district, Mr. Williams' neighborhood, that district area. There was a map turned in.
You Paul may be able to give better specifications. It's a pretty broad area on that side.
Basically, San Juan, Belmont, and Pineville.
Thank you.
That area. And really, the grant was to study and plan what was needed, if anything, from storm water to roads to water sewer.
Anything, that's the whole thing. It's fifty thousand is to apply, to hire somebody for one year, to then write grants for what the citizens want over there.
That actually, so therefore it could be used for a drainage study?
It could be used for anything in that community that the citizens have asked for.
Now, another question for the record, is the grant that we won, is that the same one that we had the public hearing on? In these chambers in front of the board? Is that the one that we had the public hearing on?
We've had two.
I know.
Was that a public hearing or just a vote to have a separate public hearing?
Well, it was brought, excuse me, it was brought, excuse me, the question was basically just brought before the council.
All these applications that have been approved, the record is minutes by the council on this one, one that was turned down, was in the hold for so a year on for RBD, for Riverdale, if you recall, having to work back on that one. All those applications and the requirements that were filed, all approved by this council.
Well, that's the problem. I heard of this here, but the only thing that I have is one where it says, add it to the agenda, it's business, I have that out, the one here, we have this one. Now, when he's talking about where they got, including for whatever, where is that? Where is the, a copybook, we see where, you know what's going on? You know, I mean, it's good to tell us, it's good to see we got a grant, but where is the, where is the application in the?
I think that one went back, I'm not sure, but I think that one went back to November of November, for the approval of this original application. There was a full application, as I recall, and it was like what it was for. I want to say it was November of last year, I can, I can pull for you, I can get that for you.
Because, see, here's the thing, all right, see, we're talking one thing, these people come and say, "This is what's right now." And I would let them sell them because anything was good. And if he, if he, no one's talking to him. And this is what the citizens need, but they really don't need, they need keep around giving hope, and that's all. They need to give it some structure. I mean, in the, the, what, the march meeting, someone asked, "Please, Mr. Green," maybe anybody had it. Okay, all concerned, it's a few people that said they ain't hearing, they've been having a meeting, even it didn't even go out back then, it was really a public meeting, you know, most people didn't, I say, hey, everybody, all of the people, the people that heard about it, they heard it through the expression. And I asked his secretary, because she called me, the woman that wanted to have a meeting with me. So when I reached the meeting with her, he said, "The downtown, he, 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 he could, correct." And these things, the whole issue here, it's been something that you say will happen, will help this community, will go into this thing, it's a good thing. But in reality, we say downtown, we want to do this thing, but after, we leave it downtown, if the community has forgotten about it. And it shouldn't be the same thing, and not for that, you know, all the people that it's been, it's been happening there, but not, not a notion downtown, saying we're having a meeting. So when you say, well, you gotta give this, give this, because a few people heard about it, it was curious enough to see what was going on. See, this stuff is not being, this stuff, this is not being coming forth right to the citizens. And if another will come forth right from the citizens, then right where you go ahead.
Stan, can you pull that over application, as you mentioned, and make sure we follow what all the same, and whatever, what goes on, and maybe we can discuss?
And maybe it wouldn't hurt, just kind of put together just a little summary of what has been applied for when it came before the council, and basically the status on each one of them, just so that we know. Because I do know that, I believe, I'm not mistaken, when Mr. Green first came, is when we met at the Shrek. I think that's the first time that I, I met him, and that has been many, many, many months ago. So, and one thing that we have mentioned as a council is that we did want to apply for grants. And so I'm glad to see that we received one. The communication may not have been like it needs to be. That's something that maybe we can certainly work on in the future and take this as a learning lesson, lesson to be learned. But I think the first step is, is to kind of show us where we are in the process, my recommendation. That way, meet with Mr. Williams and also, you know, make sure it's fair of it as well because this is in his community, it's only fair to ask.
The first step is to sever all ties with Mr. Green, with Mr. Chris Johnson. And tell them, if somebody can do it, this stuff is just not out of hand, and keep around trying to patch it up.
Well, I could certainly say that I will not be in favor of that. I think.
I think, I think Chris Johnson does an outstanding job, not only for downtown, but for our entire community, and he works tirelessly for this entire town. Much of the time that he spends, is time that he spends away from his family, from his children, and quite frankly, he's not getting paid to do. I saw him out this past weekend, all hours of the night setting up for HMM, and that's an event that drew close to 30,000 people to our town and our community. That came here, that spent money here, maybe stayed in motels and hotels here, ate at our restaurants here, and I don't think there's a better advocate for the town of Smithfield than Chris Johnson. But with that being said, you made a request for the financial statements, and Chris has offered to supply those, and I welcome the opportunity to receive those and review them that we have seen them. It would just be front office again for a fresh, fresh look. That's just my, my personal opinion, though, Mr. Williams, and you're entitled to yours as well.
I respect your opinion, and I understand, you know, and I understand your feel. But when it comes to my area and the things that's going on in my area, he's not doing anything. He's absolutely joking. I mean, he probably, and he talks about time, and he's doing a good job, I guess, that time, but in my area, he's off. That's the reason why, the town needs to sever anything with him. If he's not doing it for the whole town, yeah, he's not doing it for any part of the town.
I just wrote out this city with writing a grant for $50,000 that we won. That's more than anything that we've done on the greenway, that's more than anything that's happened downtown.
And that, that's specifically for East Smithfield, is it not? It's not for the entire town, specifically for East Smithfield?
The gateways into our downtown have long been, if you look at our master plan, has been a vital thing, and I've had meetings with you about the safety of your citizens over that you represent in that community as far as being able to pull out on the 70, and that is, that's something that I've discussed monthly.
Okay, what's the $50,000 going to go to?
It's going to go to Mr. Wallace Green's, to hire somebody to write more grants for your community.
Okay, well, it's still going to get money, it can happen.
I'm not gonna get, I'm not gonna get a dime.
I can tell you the thing, the whole issue here is being confused because everybody's telling how much money they's getting, but nothing's being done for the community. That's the point. I mean, it don't make no difference, you get a hundred million, you get a hundred million dollars, if you don't do anything in the community, then it's more good isn't it? I mean, it's not good for the citizens in that area. I mean, it ain't good for everybody else, you know, everybody can cut here and say, "How good are we all?" But, hey, but we don't give you a lot and everybody else, and everybody else is out there walking on streets of gold, hey, it ain't no good to us, it ain't good to them.
Okay, I think that's a good point, or that is counsel, you wish to put this in the form of a motion, or just want to take it in as advice?
It need to be in a motion, I made a motion, I look where you look, and I made a motion, and look if I need...
You put it out in the form of a motion?
What?
That's what I'm asking you, all that you've said about severing ties, you put it down?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have a motion on the floor, counsel, go have a second.
I asked that we restate the motion so we're clear.
Can you restate my motion?
No, I'm asking you to restate it.
I'm not restating.
I have a motion. Like, what's rules, can you restate so the motion can be understood?
It is, hey, so what can I...
Restate the motions.
Okay, there, I'm not talking about the downtown development, downtown development, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about Chris Johnson, working for town, getting grants or whatever he says he's doing, or whatever development, and he, the ties with him now. And if we need a person, we need somebody, we need to hire someone, let him work with the downtown. What do you think we could do? We need to pass it. Okay, you can press the button.
Okay, we understand, counsel. Is there a second? A second, and the motion fails, or a second of the motion. Okay, we'll move on to other public comments. Is there anyone else wish to be heard tonight in public comments? Yes, Pastor, come on up.
Let me walk you to the right time again.
Well, mine's just a little trivial thing, what y'all been discussing. And, but I've been talking to Mr. Emmer, last year at Christmas, we moved our fireworks. We put twice a year, we do the Fourth of July at the old practical this year, on our potion hospital, and we did our church in the kitchen at Christmas time. And we have to set up signs because I never know when Mr. Barnes is gonna sell that piece of property, and I've got a few businessmen say that it ever happened with a, set up a tent, we got fireworks then, and on my property. So far, Mr. Barnes has been so good to us, we have it there every year, we got it again this year there. But the problem is, people, as I'm doing it just 10 days, 11 days at Christmas, annual July, I need to set up some stick-in signs, you know, all over town so people know where we're at. And without them, they don't know where we're at. I've had people come off the interstate, Pennsylvania, and other places up north to buy fireworks. And I asked, "How'd you find out where we was at?" I saw your sign. Same way with the lady in Kinley last Christmas. She said, "I was going to watch Ron barbecue, I hadn't found you, but then I have to go back home." And she saw our church with the signs. And Mr. Emmer has, only last year, he gave me permission about three years ago, that it had been made a law or something, you could ask him, all the dealer about that. And very kind to me last Christmas, he would go, the man pulled off a sign for, not all of them, he pulled a bunch off, thank God he didn't throw them away. He saved them and I took them back. And, but that's what I'm asking, because without those signs, they will not know what they have, and it is a major fundraiser for our church. And this is, I'm asking to make it legal in the eyes of the, so they will pull my hands up, and just want my hands to stay up there.
Last several years, we've granted church exception for this one, and we did three years ago. Counsel said they were previsitive, but they had any thoughts, my recollection, that would be ruled without any hearing, so whatever, counsel, so choose.
I mean, I'm gonna think that we've allowed the place of signs where it like, have the custom to do it.
Mayor, I want to ask an opinion from our town attorney, whether that's, others who have blessed, whether that's authorized and you're going to file one.
Well, I think, well, all of it is, is the same, if you make an exception to an ordinance, you probably don't have a mandatory order to provide an exception, which would require you to reconsider. If anyone reworded, ordinance is provided for exceptions, and two gets an exception to me, you know, so there's a rule, other than having an exception. You know, the larger the town gets, the more formality you get, that's a formality that the problem has to put in them. So that's, that is the issue that I understand, anyway, if you got a formal rule, and you just don't accept it, whenever anybody shows up, you're not a set of the rule, they'll house the exceptions, and you don't introduce that, same meaning that you, and then the ordinance, so that you have a need to figure out.
But, Mr. ...
It's not a good idea, or whatever, just say that there is a, apparently, is that what called the sign was to not permit?
We do not allow temporary inclusion in signs, except political signs and real estate signs, that is all.
We don't have a charitable organization exception to that.
We do allow that in the presence, not on the roadways.
I don't have a problem with the exception, but we need to make the exception formal, sort of by zement.
You would want Mr. Emmer to come back with a amendment to the ordinance?
That's what Paul's requesting, and that is, he is definitely correct.
It would have to be an amendment of the UDO, which will require two public hearings, one before the county board, one for the town council. All the legal weapons, the powers, it's about to put this back in, be done in 60 days.
June 21st, it's when we get info for what to do.
Well, we do have a motion, but we do have a clarification and discussion for what is the government.
Mayor, the only way they might fit and work around that is if, I mean, I think we gotta change the ordinance, and I could have a whole bunch of different forms in it, it gets to be a very slippery slope, if you're gonna make any one for all. But if their language is going through the process, and language applied to the pastor's situation, I would be honored to allow that to take place, and again, special permission by the board, as long as it's pending the application of it to that situation. You know, I think that would at least be somewhat sensible, as opposed to just a normal ordinance here in Long Island.
What you're saying is the motion could be clarified to, until such ordinance would be amended, it could be allowed, if you're suspicious of what you're saying?
Not exactly, I mean, once we get to, I think, the first, the first year in that first draft, we can do it and get it done, and if it's what the pastor's asking for, if that does, if council rooms allow, allow the church to be an exception that is, you know, going through the process as an amendment, we would have that.
We would have, we would have boards with that, I think, about two minutes, which would be, as a point of the key, to power to the council, we need to take action then, but it would end up in the system, more than that.
Our, our signs that we put out does have our church name on it, you know, so, so it, well, it is our church. And as soon as the fireworks sales ends, the very next day, I get them out. And I'm gonna lay them, lay them around for eight, two months, or anything like that.
But I need to try and say administration would look the other way, if it's all up the town board, but this thing needs to be fixed. Who prepares the application for the amendment to the UDO? Paul, or someone to call through Paul, how you got a special plan to go with this one? Or, what about that? Any other amendments?
Recommendation is to wait for the amendment, the one here, man, versus the one, allowed, we had a second of that motion, which I guess, we did have a discussion.
Uh, here it is, so, the board wishes to have a manager, the administrator, to look at when ended the ordinance, to show an acceptance.
Do you think an acceptable amendment to the ordinance can be made that would include this situation, but situations similar to this?
As the city manager says, it's a slippery slope. We allow the Pentecostals to do it, with wide, stuck gives us the right to not allow the folks that come into Walmart shopping center and sell fireworks to put signs up all over town. That's the problem that we get, is where do you go, be limited to churches and nonprofits? And there's more consideration to it than just saying, allow one specific church to have the ability to put the signs up. You gotta look at the whole picture of what can they...
And really, that was just my question, can we tailor it to nonprofits? Is it the number of signs? Obviously, I don't, nobody wants to see 60 signs at the I-95 exit of that Rockin' Road. But if you limit it to, yeah, I, I think we probably could craft an exception, limited to nonprofits, limited to the density of signs.
The way I do, I have about 30 signs. I put them from Water Oaks to South, I put them to 3, 4, 301, I scattered, I scattered them out on 210, I put them out on Saturday West, I put them on Saturday East, and so on, but of those 30 signs, I've set as many of the major highways as I can. They're not at an intersection or a intersection.
That would need some action, or what, what would like to do?
There's no way we can work with the manager with time insurance, has he done?
Period stocks, I'm always, you know, you did. Okay, that's kind of, so we did, okay, just keep going, do it, that's what you do to it, and you need to consider whether you want to try to do something, and if you may come back and go to get some off of something, then you know it's gonna happen, just.
I agree, it is a very slippery slope. That being said, I believe in the power of advertising, and just like you said, signs have brought in business. I see our director of the chamber sitting out there, and he's probably thinking, "Well, if we're gonna allow an exception for nonprofit, then why wouldn't we allow an exception for these other business owners that I see sitting out in the audience as well?" So I think it's a very, very slippery slope. When we start doing this, we have an ordinance, and that ordinance was adopted for a purpose. With that being said, I've stated that the ordinance does need to be updated, and we need to look at it, and it's time to update that, and I think we're in the process of updating it. My recommendation that something like this is needed, and Paul brings us a proposal, and we look at it and we evaluate it, once we see the language that's drafted, and we vote it up or we vote it down. Really not prepared to do anything tonight, I just think that's, I mean, that's opening up the floodgates.
That's something, again, we don't have to take that, this is just our comment. Take it as your back, and let's see if we can work with it outside of these changes, but...
I agree with your comments, Councilman Moore, but we'll also remind each of us that we have turned a blind eye to political advertising ever since the UDA was adopted.
And we've allowed it, we've played it, how many years?
Probably 15 or so, probably more.
I don't know that we necessarily turned a blind eye. We have, in the ordinance, an exception for political signs. Now, if someone puts up political signs in an area that's not supposed to be put up, I've been down here and picked up many of my signs from sitting right back here, which you said that you did, all right? So I don't know that we've necessarily turned a blind eye, Mr. Ashley, but...
What, our ordinance on political signs says 30 days. I sat here in this council chamber, 75 or 90 days addressed the political signs that were already up in national election. I talked to Mr. Emmer about the political signs that were up, and did it violate our ordinance?
And it did.
For instance, if they're up 30, 40, 30 days before the election, or within 48 hours after the election, they have...
I think that's, I think that's the whole point, and something that Mr., our town attorney was alluding to, about everybody who runs a stop sign doesn't get a ticket.
I may keep this from asking, of this purpose of this public comment, I think, I suggest the board taking advice, that the member, the manager sees that they can work out something that would break back to this council, and broken that, that, that's just through.
That's fine.
Okay, that's, we'll probably do best to keep it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your work with the community.
Thanks, Pastor.
Any other public comments? Go forward, man.
Will, let's check your names of the clerk, so she can record. I'm Ray Love, and this is my wife, Holly Love, we're the pastor of the next by down Mid Street, over on Bunk Street, 906 Bunk Street. And we are here tonight because we want to have a meeting about... we want to have a tent available at Fleet Street, Community Park. And Mr. Tim Johnson told us that we had to come here to get everybody getting clear, right, time. And the tent that I was supposed to be, the 16th, 17th, and 18th, on the 18th, which will be that Saturday, we want to have a little concert and feed the community.
Have you gone to the planning department for any type of application?
So Mr. Johnson told us to come here first, and get a permit, go to the town, plan the order, get out the meeting.
Well, I think it's probably good that you did come, and appreciate you coming, but I think to start with, we'll have to go back to the planning department. Mr. Endler said right there, we'd like to assist you with that case.
So we got to do that, we got to wait next month?
I'm not sure of his timeframes, but I don't know if it will need your UDA revival day or...
Were you talking about May as far as the event?
Yes, it's on May. But you can't get May to be canceled, it's in...
I think we start in the planning department, though there's some noise issues, there's some sounds in the residential, and all those things that have to be addressed and application. So if you start with his office, Mr. Endler, if you'll give to him, he'll give you a location kind of places. We appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is something that we've been going over and committing for quite some time. We've been trying to get everyone to handle these, to be the standing pole. To get a deal in the pole, that everybody can move to handle in the pole. Because what's happening, see, that's heading to Tisborough and on some of the streets that they, you know, hang in for. I would suggest that we put in, in our, and it has been approved before, that if some kids in college and college students held in Smith College, I don't see why they have to wait until they support.
Well, they need to follow the application process. Make sure that it goes to proper channels.
But I thought we granted, Mr. Mayor, sorry, I thought we granted for situations like this, unless it was something out of the ordinary that all those could be handled within your department, Mr. Mayor. I thought that we granted that.
We have on all, we have on all new events been bringing them to councils for approval the first time. On subsequent events, we put an information package in here, that they come back next year, you'll have an information packet, and don't, it's not a consent agenda or the actual agenda, so.
But if they want to have a phone cable, please, would they have to give them the beat?
The, what drives them from it is, one, amplified music is one thing, and amplified sound, you have a PA system in addition to music, and then if it's an event of more than 100 people. So, there's several criteria that drive that.
Okay, now, if we're going to do that, let's take that and make that a rule. And then, then, you know, I, if we do it, I can understand that there were clear situations to do. Let's make that a rule. And what else we're going to have, we have to come to the council. And I guess especially with amplified music, let it be coming for the council so we can be controlled.
That's what we've been doing, yes, sir, for the last ten years.
We routinely pass those as part of the consent agenda.
You have, if that's true, on others, you have elected to take them off the consent agenda to discuss. That's been done legitimately over the last few years, but there have been a few that were questioned.
Mr. Clerk, would you research the minutes, though, and make sure that... I'm almost 100% sure that we passed a motion that these did not have to come before the council, unless, obviously, Paul, it's your discretion to bring it before the council, but I think we made a motion that it could be handled internally if needed. So if you could just research it and just let us know, but try to get it, you know, try to get it done as quickly as possible. Applicants have said that they can wait till next month. If that's not going to be a huge impact on it, then just try to get it.
I imagine you're going to have a piano or, I would get yours, something along that. That's in the park. I mean, if it was in the community, I was going to be able to say, oh, but this is the hall. They have ball games, they have to take this out there. And, you know, if you want to have a church out there, I would see why you don't, I might want to have a little child.
I'll be extremely brief. I just want to say publicly, thank you to all the departments and the citizens, and also the county of Johnson County for making this year's Ham and Ham one of the most successful areas ever. Also, I'd like to put this letter as long as well as the sponsors in the minutes of the record. So also, I wanted to present this award to the town with this token of appreciation, but I grabbed it wrong, on your honor, Carol Ann Packer. So anyway, I'll bring your privilege by tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, for all your dedication this weekend, hard work, and what you have done. Very well solid, very successful.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm out here, I'm turning, I'm sure. I'll try to be as brief as I can, might as well sleep here right now. Thank you for putting off the discussion this evening about this special tax area. In the recent local paper, there's been discussion about trying to assess or create a special tax district on East Market through the Channel Master property. I could go on for days about how bad that would be for this area. That is an economic engine that drives this town. There's $120 million worth of real improvements that represents 15% of your household taxes, and that doesn't include personal property. This is just real property versus the whole town's collection of household taxes. I don't know what the percentage is. It's sales tax. But if a move like this goes forward, that area and those businesses will have to struggle and compete with others that don't have this tax. They will go elsewhere, and that area will start to look just like 301 through Wilson or Interstate 95 around. And once that light starts, you can't stop if you're personal. And you're going to kill the goose that's saving the gold bank for all these years. I strongly urge you to cut your spending, change your priorities, and save this area. They've been paying their way and their fair share. Private development, put all that infrastructure in. It's been turned over to the town, and they may be able to generate fees for those infrastructure workers who are, so please look elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Again, I'll be brief also, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Tommy Nixon. I am the newly appointed chairman of the East Smithfield Improvement Organization, and I just wanted to introduce myself to you all, as we would certainly like to partner with the town of Smithfield and also all the other interests in the East Smithfield area, as it is a major corridor into Smithfield. So we certainly would like to be a partner in any and all decisions that's in place in Smithfield. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your affiliation with that organization. It's always been a very good old and close work. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Hank Daniels, only to sleep down, the 7:00 rate. As Mr. Sheriff Paul indicated, we have made a substantial investment up there. And I don't always believe everything I read in the paper, but it did sound like that, what I did read in the paper, that is, like, we're not pulling our fair share investments that we've made out there. And I feel like we have, and we would generate. And personally, I pay like $80,000 in property taxes, as well as collect a good amount of sales tax and occupancy tax, as to the county as well as, so. So I, again, I appreciate your time bringing that agenda up, and I give it a little more consideration, and I will have public input. Appreciate your time.
Hank, could I ask you one question? It's an unfair question, but this is information that I find that most people don't know. In fact, I didn't know until a few weeks ago. Out of every dollar in sales tax generated, take a guess at how much comes to Smithfield?
To the town? Somebody said today it was like, maybe 10%?
Of every dollar that's generated in sales tax, 84.39 cents goes to the county. The rest of the money, we'll call it 15%, is split between the various municipalities. Smithfield gets 4.52. So there is a lot of sales tax generated out there, but Smithfield gets very little of it. Anyway, just a factoid for your information.
I have no doubt that we have a lot of sales tax collected out there, and the town is not getting their fair share. But your fight is not with the property owners or the business operators out there. It needs to be with the county or the state legislature. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments. And just one comment, Mr. May, just to touch on that. And I think that was how this all came up, was just to kind of get the topic and the discussion started, exactly what Mr. Chauvin just mentioned, is to kind of start those discussions with the county and with our state legislature, not to all of a sudden adopt this. We had asked Paul to draft some letters, but I'm not sure we really intended to draft a letter that said... I think really it was to start the process, to explore the process, so I'm looking into this. It's essentially what we need to do. So this is all very preliminary.
But the idea of the slogan, that 12,000 to 13,000 people are having to bear the burden of the infrastructure out there in that half the center region of East Market and Channel Master, is not correct. And we do not need to demonize those businesses out there and have citizens in Smithfield turn against us. They also avoid that 1,500 people out there and generating their $700,000 worth. Please, no. Thank you.
Any else on the public comment? Thank you very much. We see our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
We approve it.
Motion second, those who favor I. opposed. According to business items, one, debt award additions, 2012, 13 street resurfacing project. We recognize Mr. Lynn Branch.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. I'm the manager of the town council. The 12, 13 resurfacing project was approved during April's meeting. The actual project came under budget, came in under budget, just a little under $70,000. As I reminded the council during last month's meeting, you guys reserved the right to be able to add to the quantities of the actual contract if you choose to. With that being said, this past meeting, this past month, I met with the contractor to kind of go over some options to bring to you guys so you could debate whether you wanted to do it or not. One of the options that I was thinking of was venture drive. And with the idea of going in and doing some full-deck patching and trying to get that road in better shape. And at the advice of the contractor, he stated that at this time it would not be advisable to go in and do that without going in and doing core test sampling of the actual base material of the road, because the actual base could be in a lot worse shape than we think at this time. Our contract states that we require at least a five-inch full-deck patching, and he's thinking that in some areas it could require three foot, depending on what those core testing are. So I put that in there in my action form to let you know that I did look into that, and that is something that I want to do. I want to get various core test samples done on venture drive and be able to present that to you, or more of an intense plan of going in and repairing that road and get where it needs to be, be able to pass for the traffic that we anticipated bringing. So another option was to go through the pavement condition survey, just like we did on the first round, that we come under budget on, and do as many roads as we can for the actual money that we still have in reserve, leftover, you know, that just under $70,000. I took the liberty of actually going out and marking the roads, and we came up with three and a half roads that could be added to the contract this year and still stay within our budget amount, which is the power bill funds that we had budgeted for that. Those roads, the half road, I don't want to discourage it, it was actually longer to drive, and what we've already done is went in and cracked, sealed it with staff, and the half road meaning not actually overlaying a half, I believe, another half. It's just going in and doing some extensive full-deck patching, get it ready, and it'll be prepared for next, the next resurfacing project, and we actually just come in and overlay it. We'll have a majority of already the groundwork done, they can pave it. It's going to be at 100% better shape than it was before. Right now, it's gated really, really bad, and it's going to have to have a lot of base work done. The citizens will see a big improvement just with half of it being done at this point. So with that being said, to complete the last option by adding those roads from research to contract, the price comes in at $66,798.46, which is only leaving $2,859.36 left out of the budget at $290,000. So we're actually utilizing the majority of the funds to approve our city streets. So my actual request to the council tonight is to add on these three and a half roads to the research and project in an amount of $66,798.46.
Any questions, Mr. Branch?
We approve the request.
Motion second, those who prefer I. Second item, consideration and approval of Resolution 524 to maintain its core current integrity of funding of Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, we've all had the agenda read, and the legal requirement, he's got to come up here and present it, but I would move that we approve it. Adoption of the resolution, we can do it in the...
I'll second.
Motion second, we approve Resolution 524, all those who favor I.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question, though. All right. Tim, can you, just for the record, as far as a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, can you give just a couple of examples of how that's been utilized by the town in the past? I think, and the reason I say this, I know a couple of council members have asked, have we participated in this? And just for some educational purposes, can you just let us know how we've utilized this grant, just for the record, please?
Yep. From that grant fund, we have received well over $1.4 million since, probably, well, since 1998 when we got the first one. $952 million in grant money we got from this bond for the Recreation Aquatic Center. We got a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, which was, is, not happened very often for the same, for the same one project. And we also got another $750,000 for the remainder... That was in the form of two, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants. So from that fund, we've done quite well.
Keep up the good work. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Tim. Item three, consideration and approval of two numbers of council will appoint them to this board committee. Well.
Mayor, if you recall, this was adopted and approved the end of last year, basically, as part of our employee policy, basically. And we just need to go ahead and take action on this. And actually, the timing is pretty good. The, if you may, wouldn't really, if you may, wouldn't really meet until we need to take action on by the review recommendations on the benefits, which is going to be out here in the next sixty days. So the timing is pretty good. If you can see, it's part of the employee handbook, section fifty-five, that the council needs to appoint two council members, it says shall be appointed by the full council for two-year term starting in five years on January fifteenth. So we need to go ahead and get those appointments made for that input of the council for this committee. You know, really, it's just discretion of council. Whoever's in here, if you want to do it, if you just go, it's a little decision. Anybody that's volunteer or deep below you, if you want to announce a bonus or whatever, everybody who's there.
I'll object.
I think Miss Ashen will.
I'm sorry?
I think Miss Ashen will.
Okay. Does somebody else want to volunteer?
I'll nominate you.
All right, we have two. Three volunteers. I'll two. That's the condition of that form. Okay, all those in favor, letting them be representatives on the committee, say aye. Aye, I oppose. Item four, consideration approval of a due-for-one-year contract for Petway Mills and Pearson P.A. for the annual audit.
Mayor, this is just a renewal of our present contract with the firm, with the audit firm, Petway Mills and Pearson, same form as it was last year. And this is really just a renewal for all the year questions.
You heard the request without a motion? We approve it. Second. Motion second, those who favor I. I propose. Item five, motion for the agreement with PowerLink, the temporary services, the proposed utilities.
Mayor, I think, yeah, I think there was a very, very important one. Mayor, this is, Environmental Link is a firm that we've used from time to time to fill spots, primarily like the water plant, a lot of testing, chemical licenses are required to perform those. And we're using them on and off, I think, for some time now, just as need. They said, and actually we asked, that there could be kind of some set rates, which is a good thing for our body. They provided, provide us with this standard contract, which kind of lays out, we'll see just some rates for the different qualifications of certification that we may need. And we really need one that we had to appoint even this week, starting yesterday, to perform our chemical test. We would ask you to approve this contract. You can see how the fees are set forth there. And basically, those are just as needed. We can cancel the contract immediately anytime we want to. So it's not a year or two-year contract, it's just an as-needy contract. Really, what it gives us, it gives us a reference sheet so we know what someone, what we charge for a certain level of service, buys and or employees. So really, it's really, it's basically it's a temporary service, if you will, for the water treatment. And that's all it really is. And we can't cancel immediately as needed. We might have to pay for our services or you can cancel it or we're at any time.
Earl, is that?
It is, basically, there's two, there's two agreements there, one's a master service agreement, that's what they refer to as a task, task order. As I know, we did lose our chemist this past week, we currently do not have one, so we hope to use BioLink, that is, apparently, to we can either get a chemist or maybe just outsold that off gate.
Like Mayor, BioLink, BioLink, seven years back, around this time of year, Fourth of July, around, we had a very messy, messy Fourth of July, it was a poor town. They took us by the name, they brought us out of it, they're very good company. And they're very, very understanding of the community in this city.
Oh, as a town manager, you basically do the administrator of this document or the contractor, make sure we won't use people longer than we need them on this agreement. You look at the studies and they're fairly enough.
Absolutely. There were one of the few, if not really, convenience-wise, the only firm that offers these services, you know, in this area. But really, there's none of that was, I mean, I'd say a lot of other firms that can do it, but none that would really add all, you know, add all of that call basically as needed. And we don't, you know, it's a trade-off, you know, we lose somebody, you know, you have to saddle it down. I want to say to say, they took a lot of convenience and his a little bit, as you know, there's some private services a little bit disjointed at times, but it feels a need number of time needed, so.
We'll have a motion to approve, this is after agreement. We move it. Second. Motion second, those who favor I. I propose. Okay. Thank you, Earl. Item six, consideration of RFP, primary health and ancillary floor insurance program. We have determined at the beginning of the agenda, we should be careful to be respectful of concern or request or be likely to hear it. If I'm not mistaken, the manager said we can discuss that in closed session? Okay. Due to legality reasons?
Yes, and we need another closed session on potential litigation, so two litigation groups, like plus five.
Yes. If you don't mind, can we add that?
Yes, oh, we do the, now try and negotiate and then.
Thank you. I guess we'll press the closed session after the break of session. Okay. We'll move into the, I'll get my report later, Mr. Pro-council member, Paul.
Oh, I noticed that, oh, it's seven, and I'm here, I was close to you. I noticed the last two days I didn't see any of it. But before that, there was, what, trails? There were pine trails out there. Now, I don't know where they got that straight now, I don't know. But hopefully, you know, there's no trails out there. And I hope that, I hope that has worked. One more thing, I don't think nobody would drive trucks for a trail to the ball. Now, all of a sudden, it's about just kind of here, then suddenly, people moving down there on the, on the block street, cracking trails. Now, a lot of people are kind of upset because they didn't have to pay for that, you know, the problem. And, you know, and it was something, you have a type of truck sitting out there. I think that we need to try it. If it was delivering something, that was a stamp. And the community, whatever is not delivering, it shouldn't be in there. It's treated up the street. And if we don't do something now, we'll be looking for blaming people out there and that too. So we need to get, we need to get those trucks for trucks, not be, be simply on the Sunday or the normal, we can't add the walk.
Is that something you can pass to your部门? Officers just say they see a truck and authorize another area?
Sure.
Thanks, sir. Any other comments from the council?
I just, I was approached last night regarding the construction over in Pine Acres and the work there, that's on Old Goldsboro Road as far as the drainage and so forth. So I talked to Paul today and went over and viewed the area and it's, and it is in dire need to have some improvements made quickly. And I know we received actually, I think, an email and some correspondence from, actually, I think, Mr. Nixon back on April tenth, I believe. So I was just going to ask Paul if he could share with us what, what he found out today as far as from the contractor and so forth, you know, when they, when they intend to make improvements to that area and what the holdup has been.
We had our monthly construction meeting today on the park, which was a good time, I mean, on runway project. And the contractor is committed to raining down the construction area, placing seed on it and straw between Pine Street and Oak Street by Friday of this week, weather permitting. And also, patch the pavement where they open cut the pavement, put the storm rain pipe in, have that done by Friday, again, weather permitting. The remainder of the construction from Oak Street back up Old Goldsboro Road toward the Hess Store and Waffle House, it's a little bit of delay in there, we're waiting for Progress Energy to come in and do some line relocation. They actually got there this afternoon, we weren't expected until about the twentieth of this month, they showed up this afternoon, relocated that, so we're only having to wait now for Tom Warner Cable and Century Link to relocate to the new poles. As soon as that's done, they can finish laying the pipe up, the remainder of Old Goldsboro Road behind the Hess Store and they'll raid that down. The pipes that are laying out there on the intercept, on the shoulder of the road, those will be removed also.
Paul, let me ask you a question regarding the Tom Warner and the phone line, is that something that we can do?
That is, it could be a possibility, we will have to look and see if we can, if there's enough stretch in the cable to actually move it from, we had to move the poles back about six or eight feet, and if there's enough line there to move it back, there's a potential that we might be able to do that.
If you don't mind, if you could check into that, that might save us a little bit of time, you know, waiting on Tom Warner or whatever.
Yeah, it appears that the lines are probably dead lines.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. And I just, I ask that you, you stay on that and make sure, if we've got good weather, if you will, please stay in contact with those, with the contractor because.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yes, Mayor, just briefly, I just have some concerns about the N and N shooting of the weekend and just like to ask that if our police chief, if we research some data and share with council in that area, the number of incidents we have out there, patrons, that experience out there, I have very concerned with their safety out there in that area with these incidents.
Mayor, I have a praise. I want to thank, it's already been mentioned, but I want to thank Chris Johnson for his efforts. We had the Ham and Yum Festival this weekend, it's probably one of the best yet, and I too, like Andy, I saw him working, I joked with somebody, I think Chris worked forty-eight hours a day for several days, but it was a wonderful event, an event this town should be proud of, an event that puts this town on the map for a lot of people. The community enjoyed it, you just walk around, look at the people performing on stages, be it dance groups or church choir singing, or the vendors, kids selling food and items to raise money, churches selling food and items, city clubs, it was just a wonderful event. So thank you for your efforts.
Anything else? Mr. Mayor, I've read that you were before this time.
Mayor, just briefly, you had the updated report from the departments. Just want to touch base, I think we all are well aware of the Highway City Bridge opening. Just want to let the public know, I've reported before that there will be several more weeks, if not a couple of months, of continuous construction on the rails and some of the things to be tidied up. And hopefully, there'll be some, there'll be some funds that will be dedicated for some improvements on the entrance to the bridge on the, on the west side of town. So hopefully, that'll be forthcoming. Some of the monies that have been set aside for that beautification will hopefully help that UZ will come through and do that, and UZ will handle that portion of that of, and that money is approved, which the latest word is is that it should be approved. Other work continuing on the water reuse line back in the South Smithfield neighborhood, hopefully that will be not completed, near very near completion right now. A few other delays at the beginning of the last two weeks have slipped down, but I think that's getting pretty close. Another project that was approved last month, most of those have been completed, I think we referenced was the special events that were permitted, that was completed, subdivision for wrapped up, permission of board, mission wall, those are essentially complete now. Mission Branch has completed the addition to the street resurfacing project, and I think you mentioned in your report here on that time, but just so you know, now that has approved, the contractor I think will be out. Lenny, almost immediately won't be, the next two weeks.
They're waiting for the rule tonight.
Yeah, so those are, they're almost immediately on that, that process, it'll probably take several weeks to get to that. The resolution that was approved last month, the voluntary protecting the state revenues, we're looking to finish that out, it was signed and it was sent off to our respective local state delegation, looking for help on people, developing the towns, local governance mutual upon those. And I mentioned before on my briefing reports, the resolution number five twenty-two, that terminated the wooden contract on Part A portion of the process project, that was completed and sent to UZ for processing, they have, I saw them last week, they have to have completed that termination with the wooden company. I think Mr. Everett gave you half those of the Smithfield process project update, I think he's filling out, you know, kind of my report, just reiterate, for A, they've got the curb and gutter on the Street A and A Street, it's scheduled hopefully, A Street A with base, with asphalt, backfill the curbs, fine grade, seed and all, construct seventy inch foundation of Oak Street and Hess. And that was a result of today's meeting update, we have that updated before we are fully at council meeting. I also like to counsel note that I spent all day at Longwood, utility tractor, and also Jay from utility building, building at the Electric Cities office today in Raleigh. You prefer me speak a good bit about the smart grid metering? Today was really the first official day where they talked about actual references for vendors and the presentations made on those products out today for the first time. I believe Earl and Jay probably turned tomorrow up here a little bit more than I probably did make that, but they did the essential presentations today. So again, it's been a long wait for that, so we are a little bit more with that. It's, they did a good job, it's actually, it's fairly complicated, we might have to discuss all that in a little more detail, that our budget worked out on day twenty. Oh, a few more facts to give you an update on that, to see exactly where we are with that. Some good news, some, some, some was very tedious, it took a little bit longer than anyone had anticipated, so we're trying to still get a better idea of the actual cost. And now that we're near down the vendors, every city, town like town, we'll have to get kind of an audit and actual fee, what their costs would be, town like town, in terms of what they need exactly, every town's needs a slightly different, so that will be our next step. We'll probably be able to at least one vendor, and we could go to the one that's been, I'm really recommend, by Electric Cities, or actually the top two or three. The problem is, when you start laying out the list, the next two or three, they don't have all the things that the board can have, we'll talk about that in more detail, I just want to give you an update on that, on that part, because it's a pretty big decision, it still looks positive, like the right thing to do, the right moves to make, but you know, cost is substantial, so it's something we need to, we need to look at hard. I think the revenue benefit, it will be outstanding, but it is, it's expensive, a lot of investment on the final now. It's looking out, you do some of these new one and a half, two pushing two million dollars for the whole cost of those meters showing up. That's pretty much in the ballpark figure, almost a billion or two, so it's hard to be that that's the main cost. Certainly hasn't changed. And if you recall, we actually budgeted two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year and approximately that amount will be left for next year. Without you being, we refund that partially for approximately five years, and hopefully you're paid for, we'll just get a good start in terms of funding that, that project. So again, that project is, is moving forward in that sense. Kind of our decision-making time, I still think it's probably close to sixty days away, but if any close, we might be actually having to give the county information for the first time starting today, and we'll get more and more in the coming weeks.
I got just a couple of things to wrap up with very quickly. We met with a group of mayors and bydees, with county leaders to discuss economic development and the current model of which they are using versus what some of our neighboring counties are using. How to maximize that model for this review will be identified readily in economic development. And they'll be coming back and they'll be getting back together with a plan to try to work together, something in more detail. We also met with Electric Cities here at this office, at this field, with other mayors of different communities in this and this town, to discuss ways that we can work more efficiently and some of the current legislation that is going forward now. and some of the current legislation that is going forward now, how that could impact us as far as rates, as well as other any transmissions that may happen, that will affect the community. For everything we came down, had very meaningful, done throughout the discussion this was, and very informative, and I think we'll hear more about that. Out of that same conversation, you've heard us say how we're working with other towns to work together on items. A term came out that you'll probably hear a lot more about, recentization, pocket and things, between some of this and Smithfield, it's going to be something that, for example, if Benson needs a transformer, and we have the same transformer on the ground, then they could use our transformer, in other words, we wouldn't have to have 30 out there at one time waiting all three towns. So we'll save inventory controls as well as labor that may come out later, so that's something big that I think will, will kind of be a risk. One last item that I wanted to go ahead and get on record tonight, because time is fleeting for us, as to the forthcoming electoral process. I've been thinking of ways of how to discuss this, but I just worked out some notes today, and I was played up on my leg after injury. You know, I like history, and I like a lot of biblical history, so I read a lot of things like King Solomon, and some of the wisdoms that he wrote, the ones on the writings. And in Chapter Three of Ecclesiastes, King Solomon, who was believed to be the writer, inspired those words, have, the people to have a point of perspective, and that their life, in their life, there's a time for everything. Knowing this and believing that, these words are true for every person, for every place, and for every circumstance. It helps me tonight to announce that it's time for me to focus more toward my family and my business. In just a few weeks, it will be time for the filing of municipal elections in our community. And after much prayerful thought and conversation with my family, I will let it be known that I will not be seeking a third term as mayor of Great House. I've enjoyed my services, Mayor, and I feel we've accomplished a lot towards providing a better quality of life for our business, as well as opening business opportunity in our community. Serving as mayor has been one of the greatest privileges I've had in my lifetime, and I would like to thank my family, first of all, for sharing me with the community and the time that I've spent away from them over the last 16 years as district councilman too, as well as the mayor these last four years, almost all of them. I've also liked to thank all the citizens of Smithfield who encouraged me with their prayers and support, hats on the back, calls during the good times, as well as the challenge. I was asked recently, this past weekend, in fact, by a close friend that I provided him, and told him that I would probably not be seeking reelection. He said, "Dan, in what world are you going to put all your time if you're not mayor?" And I said, "Well, time will tell." But he come back with this statement, he said, "With knowing you, you will find more meaningful way to give back to your community, because that's just for me." Well, that's probably true. And I will conserve, continue to serve and give back. I want to thank you for this time, and I encourage the council this long here today, and those who will be filing for a mayor's seat, as well as other of them's seats, to look forward to serving a great community with a great people. And I will continue to pray for those who fulfill these seats, and those who fill it now with wisdom and strength for the guidance. Again, I thank you for the opportunity, because I wanted to share this, and I just wanted to get it out there so people could go ahead and be thinking about what position they'd like to have. Okay? Thank you for that indulgence, and I think now we have mentioned a closed session to discuss potential litigation. Do I have a motion for the board to approve? I have contracts, excuse me, contracts, sir. Hope we go to a closed session, we're still in the middle of a session. 143-388, the letter. So I can say, the flag right? Approve. Thanks very much. I wanted to get it out there, so we all can...